It's double booked, too. That's great.
Oh, is he at another meeting right now?
Yeah, he's at another meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you were on there.
Yep. Well, we'll give it... The light is not directly part of the system, so we often give it an extra moment anyway.
All right.
Good.
Oh, great. Thank you. Let me call up the agenda to be in front of me. So I have that. Great. Yep, no worries. I think this is a table full of people that understands that, the double-booked meetings.
Think you didn't want to hear what I had to say?
I am shocked that you would share your opinion.
No way.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Monday, September 9th, 2024, meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. This more... As always, we're meeting at beautiful Town Hall. If you want to have your opinion shared, come on down or log in through Zoom. You can get to Zoom through the link on the agenda, which is on the town website. If you're... You can watch us on Facebook. You can watch the recording later. Yeah, this meeting is being recorded. Don't remember if I said that part out loud. And yeah, so love to hear from you. And we'll open with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Again, good evening, everyone. Compared to some of our recent meetings, tonight's agenda is lighter, and hopefully we'll get through vaguely quicker. And we'll open with public comment, as always. I see friends from the EDC. Did you want to use public comment? Did you just want us to work you in otherwise?
Um, I heard close public comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
She just joined.
Oh, she just joined?
Yeah. Oh, we... Do you want us to go on a little bit so Kathy can get ready here?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Not a problem. Yeah, no, that's fine.
After your com... your public comment and introduction to our new person.
Oh, that's... That would be fair. See, I am so rude. Joining us up here is Bernie, whose last name I have already forgotten because I am a jerk. I apologize.
Bernie Cahill. Hi, I'm from MRPC. I am just helping to staff the board tonight. I'm the principal planner there. And the new planner or land use director will be starting next week. It's kind of a substitute planner.
Yep. So he is... As we've discussed at other meetings, our contract with Richard Harris ran out because they only go for so long, and Bernie's here to help us in the remaining interim. And yeah, we'll have a... We have a vote scheduled on it later, but we do have a new actual land use director coming in, like actual, employed by the town. I'm looking forward to this. Okay. Looking for any other public comment, and then we'll come to the EDC, just to give them a second. Anyone in the waiting room or anything?
Nope. Kathy's joined, and nobody else is.
Great. I see our friends from the Lunenburg Economic Development Committee are here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I believe Anna is joining me there as well?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And Jean is here, too.
I'm just going to turn my volume up just slightly so I can hear. Thank you anyways for allowing me to speak now during public comment. Kathy Clark, Chair of Economic Development. We had previously had wanted to speak about the issues, roadblocks that exist with new businesses coming to town, after hearing from several people, after communicating with Brian previously. And I think it's a good first step forward in a discussion about the issues that exist with people and the length of time that it takes for someone to open a business, based upon what I'm hearing. There seems to be a repetitive issue with people when they're going to open a business whereby certain requests are made of parking permits, and it just seems to be like repetitive patterns. And so we want to make Lunenburg more business-friendly, and we want to be able to fill available spaces that come up. And in doing so, I think we need to introduce the idea of maybe looking what's, you know, what's stopping this, what code specifically, in terms of some of the permit process. Anna, would you like to add to that?
Um, so I think we just seen some repeated patterns like Kath mentioned, and for example, that at the end, it could have been done more easily for the people trying to do business in town. So one example was someone was looking to rent a spot next to where Lunenburg Diner is, and they were requested a lot of paperwork. And there was a bit of a pushback, and Kathy got involved, and there was communication with the previous town manager. And it got to the understanding that actually he didn't need all that paperwork, because it was an existing facility. There was no changing in floor plans, and basically you don't need that. And it just makes it... And what they had request was engineering plans with all the parking, you know, established for who's doing what. There are four other businesses that is active on that plaza. Why were requesting something? And at the end, it didn't need. And that is not something new that we hear. So the same similar thing happened with someone who's trying to open a business at a... at Summer Street, where he's opening sort of an arcade type of business, where he was first given a whole list of permits that he needed information, and then one board, one permit was being held because the other one had been said yes. And it... The length of the process was, on top of the time that they have to wait to get in front of a board, now it was triple the time, because one board wanted the... One approval before seeing the other, and it just doesn't make sense. So we are not... I actually don't believe there's a lot of changes in bylaws that it needs to be done. I think it's just a question of how we work as a town. And I understand this board somewhat limited, because you guys are, you know, just devising bylaws. But I think it's a bit of a conversation that we all need to be having, and kind of creating a chorus to say, we need to make this easier. We need to make this easier. And I think there's been already some changes that are... We are seeing improvements. Brian has started doing Open Gov for all applications. And honestly, I think that's going to be fantastic. But we still need to get out of... Get out of our way to not start going with... I want to see the planning board approval so before conservation sees their approval, because if you guys are waiting for approval from each other, people are not going to get anything done, right? So we just really need to think about what we are asking people, why we're asking people, and start having these conversations with town employees about how to streamline and make it easier versus not more complicated for people. Jean, do you have anything?
Well, I think, and the other consideration is so often that it's like it's existing... It's existing space that's already been used. And it's like, if it's already been approved in the past, why are we, you know, trying to have them recreate the wheel, since that should already, you know, be good to go? And we do want... We want businesses.
Yes, we do.
One other example that I'll mention, very specific to the bylaw, that usually some of these requests come about because of parking. And like Jean mentioned, that a lot of these places are... Have existing business in the plaza or have been used for similar purposes. If you look at the use table for parking requirements, under 1,500 square feet, for just about most business, the parking requirement is the same. Even though someone might have a flower shop, someone might do an antique shop, these might be, under the purview of the building commissioner, different business that then require new use and, you know, which, you know, trigger a whole new set of plans that people need to submit to you, although it's all retail. If you look under the bylaw, the parking requirements for most spaces under 1,500 square feet is about the same. There's really not a lot of reason to split that further and to make the process longer for business owners or prospective business owners. That's my bit.
Yep.
Kathy, do you have anything else?
No, I think you pretty much covered it. And I think parking seems to be one of the major things. And, you know, when we look at parking and even, just one moment, even up at the village where, you know, you have pre-existing spaces and the spaces are taken by the businesses, we have a need for overflow, which is a whole nother discussion piece. Just a moment, bud. So yeah, I think parking is a huge issue. And, you know, the concern is that when someone comes up with a new business, the amount of time that it takes and the cost. I just heard from someone earlier that said, you know, the total amount that he's paid out with getting plans done and leasing equipment is into the thousands. And, you know, that just shouldn't happen. We don't want to discourage. We want to encourage people. And, you know, we don't... We want to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, but, you know, certainly it should be an easier process, and it shouldn't take an extremely long time to set up something.
That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I know it's public comment, but I'm never one to discourage dialogue or open sharing of thoughts from the board as well. Anyone have any thoughts or response or just general thoughts? I will say that it's my hope that with a full-time town land use director coming on board, that this is some of the projects that the town will be able to address more thoroughly, because we'll be less short-staffed. The planning office will be fully staffed. We haven't had that for a while. So thank you very much for bringing it up here. I miss you all on the EDC. Ooh. While I have you, when is your next meeting? Do you know that off the top of your head?
It's the third Thursday now.
Is... Okay, third Thursday?
Yes.
It's the third Thursday, but since you asked, this third Thursday, we are having the town meet and greet.
Oh, thank you.
At Low Place Ranch. So this is a great... It would be great for you guys to come. All these businesses that we are talking about having a difficult time, so if you guys could show up there and explain why. So that would be a great... So yeah, town meet and greet, it's on Thursday, the 28th, I believe, Low Place Ranch. 26th, there we go. I'm glad someone's looking at the calendar.
I know I have that on my calendar.
Perfect.
Because I won't miss that. For those who couldn't be there last year, both on the board and in town government in general, I would really encourage you to come if you can. It was such a great experience to have the opportunity to have a meet and greet between active businesspeople in the town, prospective businesspeople in the town, and the members of town government who are going to interact with them in that process. It was friendly. It was low-key. The food was outstanding. And it was so nice just to meet with people and chat. And they'd be like, oh, yeah, you know, I was considering doing this. And it was neat to hear their ideas, where people are in the process, as well as be able to shake hands, say hi, so that the first time that we see them, it's not this.
Right. Or a piece of paper, right?
Yep.
People are beyond more than... Those applications are more than just the application. It's people behind them. And helps us remember that.
And I think that night, we actually managed to get, even then, a lot of the good stuff done. Where it's like, oh, you want to do this? Well, why don't you... Here's, you know, over here is someone you might want to talk to in that process. Why don't you go over and say hi now? It was... It was a lot of fun, and it was super useful for the town. Thank you for keeping up with that.
Definitely. It's a group effort. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. Any other comment?
Would I be able to, since I'm not bored and...
I mean, you are here. You're public. So I was mostly asking for the Zoom. But yeah, Logan, you were here. You were part of the public.
I don't see anyone on Zoom. Sorry, I should have checked that first. Yeah, I'm 100% with you on needing to streamline. I think the biggest part of it, like Mr. Brenner said, was just not having a full-time person who's here for the long haul. And now that we do have that, that is going to be something that I am diving into with him, along with Brian. We've talked about that. The issues with parking is already on our radar. Actually, we had an application just come through recently that ran into the exact same thing. It's a small change of use. Like you said, it's already something that that land has historically been used for. And they had to get a full engineering workup done, which is very costly. So we're looking at changing that in the near future as soon as we're realistically able. And then on the other end, I mean, like you said, this is kind of the more bylaw legally side of that. But that gets... That is what the other end, the town sort of implementation of those processes flows into. So I live pretty firmly on that end, the implementation end. And I'd be more than happy to chat about that, along with Brian or anything, and Christopher Riley, once he's settled into his office.
I'll come back on Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
He started one day?
He's starting the... Yeah. Is it 15th or 16th?
I've seen both dates.
Okay. Well, let's assume 16th.
Yeah. Chris does have some good commercial background as well. So I think... I think it's going to be a real boon to the town. Great. All right. Wonderful. Well, let's just dive on in. Logan, if you end up letting other members of the public in, would you just let me know so I'm aware? But otherwise, I'm going to blow through as much as we can, because... And we'll just go down the list. Decisions. We voted for the special permit for signage for three Lancaster Ave. We have the written version of that decision in our drives for us to review and make sure everything is cool before we sign.
And the physical copies to sign, I believe, are in your binder, Mr. Allison.
Thank you. And I assume we can wait till the end of the meeting?
Yeah, we can wait to sign. I... The specific document says BM underscore Lancaster 3.
That's... I've been... For my search purposes, I've been having everything that is for board meetings, given that prefix.
Cool.
Well, I haven't held steadfast to that.
Is that like a tracking code to keep track of the decisions each year?
Yeah, kind of. A lot of these standardizations I'm implementing as I've gone on. A lot of it was folder-based prior, but...
So just to clarify, I think that this can all be done after the meeting without taking up time during the public meeting, right?
The signing itself or the...
The review and the...
The signing... The review, we have done during meetings in case we need to discuss anything about it.
Okay.
And again, I'm less... Also less worried about it. Normally, I'd bump it to the end, but we're...
This is Logan's first decision, right?
Uh, yes, yeah. Same with 240. I think 240 Summer was technically the first, but yeah, there's that little delay.
And we don't, if I remember correctly, we don't need a vote on this. We've already voted in everything. So we don't really need a vote to say it's good. This is just...
Just ink on paper after.
Yeah. But this is a chance for us to call out. When you're done reading and comfy, just let me know. Give me a wave or something. So...
Good to go.
And I'm not saying that to rush people at all.
Just curiosity, where did the standard conditions come from with previous? I assume they came from some previous.
Oh, um, well, Richard wrote this.
Okay.
Yeah. I had... I had nothing to do with the authorship of this.
Oh, okay. Well, no, I guess...
Sorry. Yeah, now I understand what you mean. Yeah, I have never drafted a decision up like this. I believe that's probably going to be under Christopher Riley's scope.
Most towns do it that way. They'll have a list of anywhere from five to 10 that goes on every decision.
We've just gotten so used to the last year and so many different departments of just winging it.
Yeah.
You know, it's...
Yeah, no, we did solidify a set of specific standard conditions.
That's great. Yeah.
Couple of years ago now, I'm guessing. Yeah. And so we can say with standard conditions, plus or minus.
I've got no comments.
But it's worth checking, because there have been different iterations of these standard conditions.
I was going to say, yeah, it's probably important to keep that in a glass case somewhere.
There should be a file with them somewhere, but heck, if I know. I don't know any of the internal file structure. I know what you conveniently put in my drive for me to look at.
Yep.
Everyone good? Okay, great. We can sign at the end of the meeting, but this way... That is done. Okay. Next up, board discussions. I'm actually going to flip it around a little. Let's do the easy stuff. I don't even know the other stuff's very hard, but I'm going to go to five. New business, new land use director. Christopher Riley, I was, I think I mentioned before, fortunate enough to get to sit on his second interview. As a silent participant, I could send in questions. And guy seems to be a class act. We do have his resume and everything in the drive. And he has been approved by the select board. So let me double-check the wording, but I believe we just need, if we wish to, a vote to ratify that decision. Yeah, move to ratify the appointment of Christopher Riley as land use director as presented by the town manager. But if people want discussion or comment, first, I'm not trying to rush that vote.
Well, I will say that he's got considerable more experience than the previous land use director in host it. But I will also mention that all the previous towns, Saugus, Belreka, Lincoln, Wareham, Salisbury, Reading, I don't think any of those towns are similar to Lunenburg. Maybe Lincoln, but still not.
In the... I was aware. I agree with that. And during the interview, I left with the solid impression, because he basically directly said, yes, there are differences, but there will be... And there will be a learning curve, but it also, from my reading of the room, not so much his words, may be an opportunity to do more work, less paper.
And I will say that the previous land use director was urban planning. It was his degree. And this one, this fellow is planning and policy development. No urban in the title. I like that.
Comments are welcome. If people are comfy, we could look for a motion. And again, to hand you wording if you want it. Motion to ratify the appointment of Christopher Riley as land use director as presented by the town manager.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. That is... That's all of us here. Wonderful. And that means, friends, we're going to have a full office again. Woo-hoo! Oh, I'm looking forward to that. Okay. Sorry, I wanted to go to the part that left me super excited. Great. Board discussions. We've got for Articles of Warrant, the accessory dwelling unit language clarification specifically. And then we have another thing going on with Luther Road. First, we'll talk about the ADU language.
Sorry, which are we going to first?
ADUs.
Okay.
And as a reminder for our friends at home, this is some bylaw change we are putting together for Fall Special Town Meeting, because the state recently changed many of the rules regarding accessory dwelling units. Think in-law apartments as an example. And that move kind of invalidates some of our bylaw, which... We're getting far less invalidated than many towns. I'll say that, boy, howdy, because we were already up on this. But there's a few things that we kind of need to clean up, and we're recommended, because the state law could go in through, could actually potentially allow some unsafe construction situations with the way everything kind of came together. Go ahead.
Mr. Allison, the copy you're looking at there, I believe, the bits with the pink sticky notes that I pointed to in the Word versions on the drive have been edited with the necessary language to clarify it. The big thing was just kind of some confusion. If you looked at the use table and the second row, accessory dwelling units by special permit.
So H1, H2.
Sorry?
H1, H2.
Yeah, so we just clarified that to explicitly say accessory dwelling units non-conforming to Section H1.
My only... And I did notice that. My only comment on that would be that residential use is the description, accessory dwelling versus accessory dwelling unit by special permit. Just a homeowner is going to look at that, and well, I don't want the special permit. I want the accessory dwelling. Oh, what's the difference? And then they'd have to go and look at. But...
Yeah.
They're... Yeah. They seem... They seem like the same thing, but one requires a special permit and the other one doesn't.
I'll take some blame for that.
No worries.
Logan had me taken out. As an outsider looking in, but who's had some planning experience as a local planner, when I first read it, I was also confused. Like you... In fact, that was my exact confusion.
Yeah.
So I recommended some kind of wording change, just to clarify that the first one doesn't require that special permit, and then that it's non-conforming to that first standard. So anything above and beyond. standard. So anything above and beyond that. And, um, Logan touched up the rest.
Sure. Thank you.
Yep.
Now, any, remind me, any wording we settle on now, we don't, we're still at the point we don't need an amendment, correct?
No, yeah, so I talked with, um, Annie, the way that, so I had previously gotten this to her, but because the deadline for submissions is technically up until the 16th, I asked that that like not be considered the final submission. I explained that this was coming back for the most minor language tweak to here and that I would send that afterwards. So to my knowledge, that wouldn't trigger a formalized amendment process, the way that if this was something coming up on the 18th, it might, because the 16th is the deadline for submission to the select board.
Okay.
That is my layman's understanding.
And that plays fine with our public hearing announcement and everything.
Yes.
Okay, super wonderful.
Through the chair, uh, this, we've, we've already submitted this as an article for the warrant, haven't we? And then we've also got a public hearing coming up on it, so.
So my understanding, because we submitted it, there were some questions on language. Is this the, this is an edit to what we looked at. So last meeting, we looked at it, had some talk. These changes reflect the talk we had at the meeting, correct? Do I understand that process, that part of the process correctly?
No, these, these changes aren't reflective of that specific.
Okay.
This is mostly from reading it over and, and seeing the confusion from a homeowner's perspective that Mr. Allison had, had just mentioned. Um, so if, if this would require an amendment, I don't know that process. That's not something I've been able to find. I'm kind of still absorbing the whole warrant process as a whole. But this is, in essence, a very, very minor edit to what was, um, talked about at the last meeting. And it's coming back before you because the article can't be agreed upon and then edited post facto without.
Yeah.
Any of your input.
Has the warrant been printed? Like the article, uh, how many warrant been printed?
No.
No.
Has the legal notice been published for the hearings?
Yes.
The notice has been published, but I don't think it makes explicit reference directly to the language in question here. It's kind of a.
Because you can have revisions even during the hearing process.
Yeah.
You post them online and you just put a revision date as it goes all the way to town meeting. That's why you have the public hearings.
Right.
If there are changes based on public feedback or your own opinion, so.
Exactly.
At this stage, I think Logan's interpretation is correct.
Right. Oh, right. We got hang, we've gotten hung up the past couple of years some because we've been down to the wire with some of our submissions and that meant that edits could only be via amendment.
I do have a comment.
Please.
It's not, not, it's not, nothing that we could actually change because it's part of what the, the state is mandating. But I think when it comes to the public meetings, we just have to be careful when we present it as, as it's a, a simple change. Because that was kind of my initial understanding, is that it's not significantly different than what we had before. But I do see that they have removed the, uh, this, those who we have elected to, to govern us have removed the requirement that one of the units be occupant owned. So on face value, that's fine. Like I, I'm not, I have no problem with that. It gives me, gives me some more, you know, flexibility with the property that, that I own. But what concerns me is time goes on and investors come in and an investor decides to purchase my home and offers me a little more because they have the insight and, you know, planning fortitude to see my property as ripe for that type of investment. So I sell my house and they rent my house and then they rent the ADU. So I think that's kind of a significant thing for people to consider. And, and the more important, I think, is the fact you cannot consider that. Those who we have elected to govern us said we cannot do that.
I would say, yeah, no, so I should be clear that the changes we are making are, as a board to it, are very minor. Um, the state's mandate does shift a few things. It's still much less than other communities are having to shift. But no, you're right. There are some shifts with, like that. I don't know if we required owner occupancy of ADUs in town.
We did.
We did?
Yeah, one, the one, the primary, I believe, I think, I think we actually specified the primary unit must be occupied by the owner. But there is definitely some ownership.
Okay.
Implicating.
All right. I, I didn't, I don't remember one way or another because.
Well, it's.
Didn't.
It's, it's in here, it's in blue. It's, um. I thought it was.
It's next to lowercase i. I don't want to scroll to, to lose my spot, but this is a lot and all structures shall be owned in common and then struck out.
Uh-huh.
Is. And one of the units shall be occupied by the property owner. That's stricken.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Fair, okay, there we go. Thank you.
And, and not to dovetail into the MBTA Communities Act, but that I see as a huge push to develop rental properties. So I worry about the young, everybody getting forced into a rental, um, class. And if, if that, you know, that, that's the big looming thing and all these, these other, you know, at least, you know, I, I'm not even sure what the difference is why we're actually voting on the MBTA Communities Act versus this. Like they just told us, hey, this is how it is. Just deal with it. So I just, I, I just need more information on both issues and, and take time to, to consider it. But I really do get concerned about everybody being forced into, uh, you know, rent, being renters and not owning their property.
Fun fact on that, if you are building a, uh, low income housing, what's that law again? The name's escaping me.
Forty B.
Affordable housing, that's what I meant.
Forty B?
Forty B, thank you. If you are building forty B units for sale, of a product, a, a bunch of units with forty B housing in it for sale, super paraphrasing the law here, but if they're for sale, you can only count the forty B units themselves towards the town's affordable housing quota. If they're being built for rent, then as long as that, whatever that percentage is that's met, the town can count all of the units, whether or not just the forty B ones. So it's, no, I mean, I'm, at, my point being, I want to echo what you're saying, that I get the notion on the surface that renting is often interpreted, is traditionally interpreted as more affordable than owning. And so there's a kind of a push in that direction, but. It is creating a scenario where that's being really factored. And I think you're right, this other, a lot of the things we traditionally consider true about rental may not be as straightforward with investment companies coming in and everything else.
I, if I may, I'd like to add to that, that this board has no authority to dictate the ownership model once we've approved a project. We found this out with Waylum Luxury now arrived, Lunenburg, whatever. This board approved that project with the understanding at that time that they were to be rented or owner occup, rented to own. And I believe to this date, there are still zero owned. And that was the previous land use director's explanation for why. Because the board at the time expectation was rent to own, whereas the actual in situ use of them was basically just rentals. And, and, and you're right about the, uh, the HSI, the, the, the affordable percentage that we need to keep is that Waylum Luxury, all rentals, all units go towards that number. Whereas just the affordability component only applies to ownership. But again, this board does not really have the ability to dictate that on approvals. Just wanted to remind everybody.
But again, uh, I think this is a super interesting conversation because it's one of my passions too, but our focus here is much more narrow. Regardless of our philosophy on it, this is, the rules are changing and what we have in front of us is the document that specifies how we are pivoting to meet that mandate. Again, because for our, our friends at home, if we don't meet the mandate, that's like a choice we could make. But then we just, not meeting the mandate, the mandate still happens. It just invalidates a lot of our bylaw and leaves us less protected.
Then we can't get grant opportunities. Some of those get taken away.
Oh, with this, okay, I hadn't.
With this one as well or just the MBTA?
Uh, just the, hmm, just the MBTA.
Yeah, with MBTA.
This one, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, with MBTA, they'll also come prosecute us.
They changed that too. Now that they got so much pushback.
I don't want to say prosecute too. The AG has said that they will take legal action. I don't know what that is. We don't have to worry about it. We're, at least now, so.
No home rule and.
Yeah, with this one, if you just don't bring it into conformity, the state law becomes the underlying law of the land.
Yeah.
In town, so that's the difference.
And that's why we have this, because this is doing a few things like making sure you can't build your house so close to the property line, the fire department can't save you. Because it turns out they like saving people. Who knew? Think it's a conspiracy by Big Fire myself. If anyone out there knows who Big Fire is from the amazing 1980s anime giant robo, you're amazing, by the way. And like you and me are both fans, the two fans of it. All right, anything? Any changes? Are we comfy with this? Any discussion points? I see the, myself, I see the potential for some homeowner, towns person confusion. But I don't have a better answer. And the good news also being that, quote, I mean, is any work that's done here, because it is going to be construction by default, is gonna go through building. It's gonna get looked at. If there's, anything that has to come through us will come through us. So we'll, people will have the opportunity for handholding if they're looking to do this.
Do, do we need a motion?
What would the motion be for this? To submit this as the, to submit this as written to the.
I'm gonna defer.
Select board, yeah.
To the select board for inclusion on the town warrant.
That's correct.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. Thank you. Get back to our agenda and takes, I normally check things off as I go, but I can't write with my right hand. So, uh, 260 Fallula Road, uh, two, is looking for a two-year extension of site plan approval stormwater permit.
Should note, two-year extension beyond the two-year extension that they were already granted.
There was a one-year extension, right?
I thought the condition said two.
It provided for two to start.
Yeah, so it was.
Oh, right, right, right.
Normally one year. So we've already seen this in, approved and everything. Couple, about two years ago, it turns out. We approved it with, and, and they can give much more info. But we approved it, at the board at the time approved it, uh, with two years. My understanding was that was because there was some necessary paperwork things or research or something they had to do. What's?
That was the stated reason in the most recent.
Okay.
Request that the delay was due to ongoing, uh, what's the wording, geotechnical research?
Yeah. They requested two years instead of one on the initial project. We said, okay. And now they're back for another two-year request.
Do you wanna?
Yeah, so, um, I reviewed the rules and regulations for site plan approval and as the chairman said, we had, um, or the, this board had originally approved that two-year. I'm not, you just said it. I don't know why I'm reiterating.
That's fine.
Restating it. Um, but, so by the rules and regulations, um, significant work has to start within that first year period and then we're granting an additional year. However, it does say in the rules and regulations, the board can only grant a one-year extension. It doesn't say anything about more than that. Um, they don't need a public hearing or anything for that, which is why it's here tonight. Um, my professional opinion and recommendation is that this board approve only one-year extension since that is your rules and regulations. I think anything else is gonna require a site plan modification to change that original condition on that plan. So, um, also, it is a little unusual to take, it was, the board was already quite generous by giving that extra year to start work. Um, and I think it's, behooves this board to check in on this applicant and developer in 12 months' time and not two years' time. I mean, the burden isn't that big on them. They come in and you can ask for whatever documentation you want to say, what's the delay, what's going on. Um, in fact, tonight, this board doesn't even need to make this decision on accepting this, um, extension. It has until.
Uh, the latest meeting we can do is October 20th.
So the second meeting in October. So if you, this board wants to request more information from this developer and say, can you give us something else? You know, can you show us some of these, uh, geotechnical reports or something? The board certainly has been its rights to request that. Um, but my, by your own rules and regulations, it's one year extension.
I should note that meeting in October is actually our only meeting, I believe, due to, um, is it Columbus Day?
Yeah.
Or holidays, yeah.
Yep, that, that conflicts.
So is that, I hope I made myself, that's clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I am left. Confused. Not, not by anything that's been set up here so far. I, I just don't really get the why. And maybe it's more obvious in here and I'm missing it. But like, a lot can change in three years, which is why we don't normally, I mean, that's why we normally do a year-long approval. Is there a history? Has this happened before? Like with that, with that kind of extension? Matt, can you think? And you're the longest serving on the board. I can't think of any, but I might be forgetting some.
Well, we've only recently changed from review to approval. That was only a few years back. So we had no teeth before and now we've only got mild teeth. Um, but this specific project, I will mention that this is only a small parcel of their land on the project. I don't believe that this parcel is even accessible through any roads in Lunenburg. This, in my opinion, in the first place, was basically just checking all the boxes. I would, I would ask, because the majority of this project and the actual substantive portion of this project is in Fitchburg, have they also asked for and received for a similar thing from Fitchburg? Uh, and on top of that, I would also consider that, again, this is just a little tiny corner of the project that lands in Lunenburg. Um, and, and from their presentation that I recall, it was a while back, um, I, I had no problem at all with it in the first place. And, and also, Fitchburg has been a little bit of a change, similar to Lunenburg. They got a new mayor this, this year, last year. Um, and I'm pretty sure that resulted in some turnover in town, in the city council and what, whatnot. But I personally, I would have zero. whatnot, but I, personally, I would have zero problem with this, aside from what has been already mentioned, that our regs say we can only give one-year extensions, so I would be inclined to approve a one-year extension.
Is this the one where they were doing a bunch of work on the riverfront?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, now it all clicks. Thank you.
This is one of the first ones that I dealt with.
That answers, that kind of re-answers about 15,000 of my own questions about why it would take so long, because I remember all the discussion about the riverfront and every, okay, great, that. So, I mean, I guess, part of me wants to know what Fitchburg's doing, but on the other hand, I don't know that we're supposed to predicate our decisions on what other towns are doing. I know it's weird what we can and can't consider sometimes, that we're not supposed to wait for other groups.
We can't condition an approval upon the approval of another board, but I don't see any reason that we can't ask Fitchburg what they're doing about it, because if they say no, then our response is move. Quite frankly.
And we, Logan, is there something that you could reach out to them and get that info on?
Absolutely, I could call them. I could also call up Hanigan Engineering and probably get to the applicant through them possibly. I'm sure they'd be happy to give some context, but I can't imagine they haven't approached Fitchburg about this. And I can definitely reach out to Fitchburg's end and ask.
I would love personally slightly more info, just to have a lay of the land. I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to eat up their engineer, like their engineer hours and have someone come in and give a big presentation, myself. I don't know if others feel differently, but I would just like a little more lay of the land and, as well as just finding out if Fitchburg's seen it, what they've done, if they have any concerns or anything. Okay, great. So are we, do we, are we kind of in agreement? We want, we'll wait till, well, hopefully our next meeting will have some more info?
I would give them a one-year extension right now, but that's just me. It's not what they're asking for either, so I don't know that that would approve, you know, that would suffice for them, I have no idea. Do we know when the drop-dead date is when they need this?
Drop-dead date is November 14th, and our last meeting before then is October 28th.
So we've only got two meetings between now and then.
And the 23rd is gonna be pretty jam-packed, so.
Yeah, that makes me care less. Like, like being real, right? I think I'd also be comfy in that context, doing the one-year, because we haven't, like, I can connect enough dots for it to make sense, and simply being, we can't give them two years. That's not in the bylaws. If they don't like it, they can, I mean, not if they don't like it, if it's not enough, they can come back in a year and say, hey, we need a little more.
One other thing comes to mind, and it, I think I answered my own question, but even though some members weren't here for the original approval, they can still vote on an extension. Is that, is that correct? If even, I mean, it makes sense.
You mean the original, like from two years ago?
Right. If they weren't here for the original approval, they can still vote on an extension.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good catch. We've had a lot of that recently with, okay, you know, this hearing started before someone was on the board, how do we handle?
The hearing's still ongoing, that's different.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, no, but that's why we're sensitive and thinking about it.
No, no, that makes sense. Yep, no, good question.
And that is just a simple majority vote, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm concerned about quorum, I mean, we were missing, we're down by one tonight anyway.
No, good questions.
And if we only have two meetings before they're dropped dead.
I don't disagree. I'll accept a motion. That motion could be due, let's wait, that can be due, let's approve the, approve an extension of one year on this project. It could be something else, but I think those are the two obvious ones.
I'll make the, I move that we grant a one-year extension for the 260 Fallula Road project. Is that sufficient?
For a site plan review and stormwater permit?
Yeah, that one.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Logan, if you would just communicate to them why we did the one-year.
Absolutely.
It is not to slight them, but that's what we can do. Great. Oh, we're rocking that agenda tonight. Okay, wonderful. You know, by the way, back to the Land Use Director thing, I want to give a quick shout-out because, I meant to do it then, and I forgot because I was so excited we have an oncoming Land Use Director, but Mr. McLeod on the board caught that we needed to hold that vote. And that's in the town charter. It may not have even been in the town charter when Adam was hired, because there was a charter shift since then. So Mr. McLeod caught the need for that vote, so we could have it and keep everything running smoothly. Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Okay, ongoing items. I don't know if we have a ton for these right now, but they're here. MBTA zoning, that'd be the MBTA communities. I'm not up on my dates on this off the top of my head, so I know we need to be acting to be ready for Springtown meeting, but we don't have to do anything for MBTA communities. Like, we have to be buttoned up for Springtown meeting, but we don't need anything before then. Like, aside from lots of work to get there and bylaw crafting and stuff.
Far as I know, no. I would, I don't know if I've heard of you, but.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure of Lunenburg's status. It's a neighboring, it's an adjacent small town.
Yes, we're an adjacent small town.
So, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's the end of next year, December 21st, 2025.
Oh, right, yeah.
So you, do you have Springtown meeting? I'm not otherwise, I've sworn not to comment on this, because you're about to have a new planning or land use director. So I think it's best once Mr. Riley comes in, you work with him on next steps. And he, he's gonna know, I mean, having worked with these other communities, it's not like his ear hasn't been to the ground, he's, not even more than that, he's been involved in it heavily, so.
Yeah.
I would recommend that this board wait for him to arrive and then get going on it with him together.
Is there any, I'm comfy with that, but is there anything anyone wants to talk about on that topic? Any, they're ongoing items in case it's something we need to address.
Well, just keep it short, obviously I have a lot to say about it, but I just would encourage those listening to learn about it. They've gotta just form their own opinions, you know, Google, there's various communities have town meetings, you can listen to both sides, and you just, everybody just really needs to educate themselves on it, because again, it is, it is, you know, those who are, we've elected to, to govern us are changing the way that, you know, our community will look, the way we choose to have our community built, they're, they're changing it, so they just need to be prepared or be engaged, particularly when it comes time for the, the public hearings. And that's, that's, that's about it. And I, and I did, I would reiterate, I couldn't open the meeting minutes for the most recent, so I don't know if it made it there, but I'll just reiterate that it's my opinion that the board should have a, you know, an article or the zoning submitted to the Office of Livable Communities, whatever the state agency is, we should submit that for their approval prior to sending it to town meeting vote.
And that, and you said that was because there were communities that had passed things, gotten it through the AG no problem.
Yeah.
And that's normally getting past the Attorney General is the litmus for towns for, good job, your bylaw's legal, have a cookie, and that cookie is your new bylaw. And that has been a little bit of surprise for those communities, when they were then turned down after that fact.
Right. And so that would put them out of compliance, yet have effective zoning change. So that zoning law would be in effect, but you would still not be in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. So that's just, you know, even if that meant you were out of compliance for a couple of months or whatever, I think it's imperative that we know, because the, all along through this process, which, you know, the, I think the, the bill was passed in like '22 or something, but it's, it's, the law itself is three paragraphs long. It's very short law, but it gives that state agency the power to set regulations, and those regulations have changed over time. And so it's, it's, it's a, you know, the proverbial moving target. So I think it's, it's critical that we do our due diligence, do it quickly and efficiently, so that we come up with a proposed bylaw change that we believe is in compliance, but send it into that state agency first, prior to, because that's a big ask for us to put it before the citizens. It's changing potentially the, the fabric of this, this community. So it's, I think it's imperative that it be, you know, approved prior to that time.
Now, the good, the good news now, you mix a gallon of ice cream and a gallon of poop, what are you left with?
Pooping.
You've got two gallons of poop, right? So I get that as well, but.
Eddie Murphy.
The good news, though, being the MRPC has been helpful with us. Look, I am only a certain level of professional, y'all voted for me.
Okay, I could've told my husband that later, I've never heard that before.
It's worth noting that MRPC has, thankfully, I don't disagree with a single thing you've said about all of the frustrations, and I share them 100%.
Go away.
Hopefully, it looks like MRPC may have found some options that will be the least transformative for the community in terms of changing the character, but there's stuff to figure out in there, and that's why I am very glad we have a new full-time land use director coming on. I am sure I'll be talking with Christopher a whole bunch once he starts and gets going, but as a reminder, I do that a lot because I'm chair, but also because of me, and you can talk with the land use director because you're you. That's, it's not, I am, I am not the, a mandatory go-between between the board and the land use director, nor should I be. All right.
I have, I have one more comment on that.
Please, go ahead.
Also, I would also defer the members to the July 8th meeting of the planning board. I'm just here confirming that this draft is, it's still in our drive, I believe it is, I haven't gotten. Anyways, we got presentation from Karen Chapman from MRPC on July 8th. We got this nice handout, and I will say that we've got four different options for districts, and I believe the bylaw requirement is probably gonna say one. So I'll also note that the, that all four districts are in our, our southwest corner of town, in the Walem District, which has already suffered all the development crises of Town Lunenburg. And my understanding was that at the time of this creation of, of these four districts, the requirement was that it be within a certain distance of an MBTA stop. And I believe, I, I asked Karen that question, and she said, that's changed, that's not the case anymore. So potentially, we should review this, and if we, if we don't have to be within a mile or a half mile of an MBTA stop, there's one in Shirley and there's one in Leominster. Those are the two that are close to us. So I guess, I guess, the choice, the decision, the scrutinization of an appropriate zone, I think is still up for further discussion as well.
I don't think all the districts they recommended were down there. District four is further towards the, I don't have the full map handy, but further towards the northeast.
It's behind Wally World.
What's that?
It's behind Walmart in Hannaford.
Yes, it is.
It's privately owned, commercial, well, not commercial, it's privately.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at, because I was just looking at the map quickly, now I see, that is the area where Lufa Farms theoretically wants to.
What's left of that farm that turned into Walmart, exactly.
Move into. Yeah, we're gonna have work to do on that. Good points, it sounds like no more tonight, and that is okay, but we do have that document. I've got mine in here, and I've got all my little red scribbles all over it.
Mr. Chair? If I could just make one clarifying point.
Please.
Which is important, in case there's anyone watching that's wondering exactly what we're talking about, or in the future watching it recorded, is 200, this, this MBTA Communities Act is, would require Lunenburg to build 240 family units in the town, meaning more than one bedroom. Cannot, cannot limit the amount of bedrooms, and you cannot limit the occupancy of it, the number of occupants, in a nutshell.
It doesn't require, it does not require us to build them, it requires us to.
Zone.
Zone so they can be realistically built, because that was the first thing, everyone's like, great, we're gonna zone that swamp. And, yeah, then the state said you actually have to be able to build there, and from there, the requirements kept coming.
If I may, one more comment about that, is that that 240 is approximately 5% of our existing housing stock, which in my mind is absolutely ridiculous, but again, my opinion.
Mm-hmm. Is it 240? I thought, I thought we could get away with less in some of those, I have to go back and check.
Oh, we got reduced from 700 something, because we're, because they, they came up with the adjacent community that, that gave us.
It went down to 240 from the 700, which was insane. But I thought there was, the zoning has to account for it, and I know there's, there was some talk that some of those areas, we may be able to use some of the existing housing, I thought, and I.
Yeah. That's, that is, and that's, those discussions are partly what drove me to suggest having it approved before going to town meeting, because I have watched other towns that have all these districts that encompass, you know, like Trytown, and they're, they're under the opinion that they're gonna be able to do this rezoning, and maybe four units will be created, you know, where they were otherwise gonna be required to have many more than us. And I just, I just find it hard to believe that the state would allow for that, but that is what the, the presenter told us, is that there was ways to zone it, and I hope that's the case, that'd be great. I, you know, so there, it's not all doom and gloom, but I just have, you know, concern about leaving it up to the state or, or not having it perfectly well-defined, defined within that zoning article.
I would use the phrase justifiably skeptical.
Yes.
All right. So I'm gonna move us on, unless there's anything else.
One last.
Water Supply Protection District. Now, we have a public hearing coming up on this, so I didn't put it in board discussions, also because I didn't want, I wanted to keep it really clear, like we said to the public, we might talk about it, but we weren't gonna have another public hashing out, we've done I feel like we talked about it an awful lot already, don't get me wrong, but I wanted to give us the opportunity, if anyone wanted to, before the public hearing, to discuss the Water Supply Protection District bylaw that we have going to special town meeting.
I'm not sure where in this circular loop that the discussion has been over the last couple of years that I really want to get into, and I don't think any spot.
But you don't think, I missed the last.
I don't think there is a single spot on this circular loop that I want to jump in on right now.
I'm fine with that. I wanted to make sure it was on the agenda so we could talk about it. We've talked about it a lot recently, and a lot of people have talked about it a lot. And as always, thank you to the community for coming out and discussing. Okay. Chair Director's report has nothing in there, is there anything that's come across?
Boilerplate item for you slash Bernie slash Chris in the near future. If there is nothing on your end, then. If there is nothing on your end, then.
Wonderful. Perfect. Just wanted to make sure, because sometimes there's the, oh, wait, abutting community notices.
There's a couple of those in the drive for you to take a look at if you want, and they're also contained in paper over there. That was, again, per Richard Harris's recommendation to be gathering those for you to look over, if you'd like.
So, again, that's, I don't remember there being anything that gave me any concern right now. I, I mean, I only scanned them, but if there's anything anyone wants to talk about from there, we can, otherwise, we can move on. And again, Richard felt that it was good practice in general, but especially without a full-time land use director, for that to be, for those community notices that are normally emailed to us to be brought out a little more formally.
I bet you the Flula Road project, if they proved an extension, would have been in there.
Hmm.
Let me look.
That's a good point.
That's a, if it requires reporting out, the extent, I don't know if extensions have to be reported, what level of reporting to anybody.
Yeah, right? Really, who, yeah.
Like, I don't know.
I take that back. You're probably right.
Yeah.
Why would we want to know that?
There's always so much we don't need to know that we're told in case we need to, and that makes sense.
Even within town.
Banger. I'm not going to say no to moving things along. Okay, committee reports. Master Plan Steering Committee. Tim is not here to report on that. I am meeting with the contractors tomorrow because the date of our twice monthly meetings have shifted to Tuesdays, so I'll have more after that, but kind of the short answer is, it's going forward. Oh, they are going to, at the, if memory serves correctly, at the Town Meeting Greet is one of the places they're going to solicit to get more info from small business people and create one or more basically interview groups to hear from small business people about some of the good parts of Lunenburg and the challenges they faced, so they have that input as well as they're kind of taking all the input from the town people, from the business community, and see what might work as recommendations for the town. We're coming to the end of that process. Okay, Open Space Committee.
We have not met since the last meeting, and there's a meeting this week on Wednesday.
Great. Municipal Building Design Committee.
That was the phone call I was on before this meeting, and I had to cut it short so that I could attend this meeting, so I got about half an hour of that meeting. And that, 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 that meeting earlier tonight was the first in over a year, I believe, that that group has met. And it appears that, it appeared to me, again, I haven't, I, I wasn't there for the whole meeting, but it appeared to me that there is a, an impetus to formulate and agree upon an RFP that that group really never saw until tonight, is my understanding. An RFP that was put forward by the chair of that committee, the last year's chair of the Select Board, in conjunction with the town manager and the assistant town manager. That, that just doesn't sound good to me, but that's my report.
What, do you remember what the RFP was for vaguely, or specific?
Yeah, it was for construction services to include school, hmm, school administrative in the Ritter, and something to do with the town hall.
Okay. Thank you. I am personally glad to see movement on that committee, and I am grateful for that, and I hear your frustrations.
So, so to, to further that is that even though we haven't met, there was approval of $225,000 from the ARPA funds that we received, over 3 million. We had, I believe, there were requests for six-plus million, in total, from different groups in town. 225,000 is a lot of money, and in not only that, I think that we're very close to a million dollars spent in the last 12-plus years in just studies. In my mind, that's out-the-window wasted money, but that's my mind.
Sure.
Anyways.
Okay. Oh, we do not currently have an AGCOM representative. We should put on the, now, does AGCOM, do we have a, an ex officio spot there? Do we have a, or is it, like, I know that you were previously our rep there, Matt. Do we have a, what is our role on that committee?
So the reason that we have, and thank you for the question, the reason that we have that on our agenda is because in 2012, I attended a meeting of like 30-plus people in the basement of the Ritter Building, and that was basically, the local farmers got together to decide if we wanted to create an agricultural commission. And after I was a member of this board in 2012, I don't know if it's 12 or 13, but the agricultural commission was created, and as myself, a, a member of a family farm over 50 years, longer than I've been alive, had great interest in it, and as a member, I wanted to be their liaison because they were brought together in, I'm not going to get into that, because they had no support staff, anybody involved in town government, nothing. They had nothing. My opinion wasn't then, but it is now, was the only reason this town wanted to have an AGCOM was that they could save the 10% on the APRs. It's always been, and I have never hesitated to express my opinion, that this town does not care about the farming community. Everybody says they love the look, they love the vistas, they love the farms, but as soon as they smell it, or they get stuck behind it, or they have to live next to it, no. Or they have to fund anything for it. In my experience, in the 12 years, they're not interested. So it would be my recommendation that we take that off of our committee reports, because they have, the current membership has requested liaison from the Select Board. Currently, it is Mr. Jeffries, so they have a liaison, a liaison from the Select Board. I don't believe that they really need one from the, from the planning board, and I think that the Select Board liaison might be even more appropriate than the planning board. Just so happened that I was a fully-appointed member to that, too, so that's my true sense on that.
Fair.
I don't think we need one.
I may reach out just to see if they're looking for and expecting a liaison from us, but if not, then we can, once we have that info, I think we have to make a decision there.
Sounds good.
Great. Capital Planning Committee. Yeah, we're kind of in the hurry-up-and-wait phase. We started on the whole capital planning as opposed to capital ranking and prioritizing, but that has been somewhat held up just due to the town manager transition, due to people's lives. It's, the process is getting moving, but now we're also getting into the actual capital planning season, and there are meetings for that coming up soon, but I know we're waiting on a couple more dominoes to get lined up. I don't have the next meeting scheduled, I don't think we have another meeting scheduled off the top of my head. I think we're waiting. I'll email everyone if I'm wrong on that. Economic Development Committee.
I think they spoke for themselves. I think, I think that's covered.
Love it. Stormwater Task Force, Mr. Wilson is not here. Town Manager Screening Committee. I had that put on because I am our, the planning board officially by charter has a place on that, so it should be reported back. Yeah, the, the Town Manager Screening Committee did elect to, to use a firm to help us in the search process, because, I mean, simply put, all the info on the table looked much more likely that we would be able to attract, it, it increases our odds of getting qualified candidates who are a good fit for Lunenburg through the door, as well as has some potential backend benefits for communication and everything to help make sure we, not back channel, but like, just like, having another person there helps with some of the communication piece to make sure that people coming in know what they're getting into, are comfy with the town, that they know what Lunenburg is, because having someone to talk to who, who isn't the people who are part of a hiring process directly can have some real benefits for helping align expectations. We, a, a group was confirmed, was, uh, was, was confirmed, I don't remember the name off the top of my head, but they're the ones that we spoke to about what do groups offer in general, that we put out for bid. Their bid was the most competitive.
Do you recall how many responses there were?
I don't know off the top of my head. I could.
Were there more than one?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't want to guess a number, because I have a few sitting in my brain, and I might have made them up. But, yeah, so that's where, that is, we have a meeting coming up on Wednesday. Monmouth Tucusit Regional Planning Commission.
They met last week. I was unable to attend.
And Monmouth Tucusit Joint Transportation Committee.
We meet this Wednesday.
Wasn't there a meeting for them just recently canceled, or am I making that up?
For MJTC?
I thought so.
Sometimes they skip months because over the summer, there's not a ton going on, but I did not see any notices that this upcoming one was.
I, might have been something tangential then. I had a note from MJTC, because I still get the emails, because they, they love not taking you off the list, and that's fine.
I still get them.
Oh, okay. You guys are welcome to take it over.
That was like.
Yep, September 11, MJTC canceled, plus invitation to 918 MPO meeting.
Okay.
I got that for some reason.
I can get that.
Wow.
I might not get the emails. That's what I've been doing over two years, so that's fine. Cool. We don't have a meeting on Wednesday, then.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Minutes Approval. We have minutes for our, for our July 22 public hearing, for 240 Summer Street, for our August 12 meeting, and our August 26 meeting.
I think one or two copies of those may have, in like the, you know, page X of Y part of the header, instead of the date, it'll say "date underscore here." That, I fixed that, but I didn't fix it in the printed copy. It's, it's fixed in the Drive one.
Okay, cool.
There's no other changes.
Right, and I have to go into the actual, because... Did you, just out of curiosity, this is more of a process question, did you intentionally submit links to a Word document?
Yes.
Okay, cool. That's totally cool. I just, it was different than we've seen before.
Yeah, I was trying to do that where possible, single source of truth thing. The way that it was done in the past, everything that you guys have ever seen is a copy of something that also exists on my end, and you can imagine how, yeah.
826 is not opening.
Not opening?
Yeah, the minutes are not opening.
What happens when you click it?
It says, "Something went wrong."
Oh, yeah. Sorry, something went wrong.
Something went wrong.
Awesome. Okay, let me just copy those over then.
Also, I have a question about 240 Summer Street.
Mm-hmm.
Because that one, Mr. Brenner and Mr. Allison were both absent.
Yes.
So are, if we all read the minutes, we're good to approve it?
You may, you may vote for approving minutes for meetings you have not attended.
Perfect. Just making sure.
That is completely allowed, and I've also watched all the videos like a good doobie.
Aww.
Like I said, I did watch them at 1.5 speed because with subtitles on, because then I could go faster, but.
Smart.
All right, I've just dropped copies of the documents themselves in, so if you can't access the links, use those ones instead. SharePoint permissions are so fun.
seen in the past.
Any specific data? I mean, I agree.
No, I don't, so, I don't personally have a problem with that. I don't know if there's a reason they're normally more concise, and if that matters. I love more data, but.
I think the general purpose is so that, you know, you can skim through, I mean, it's the reason there's a difference between minutes and something like a verbatim transcript.
Yeah.
I, I will say they've definitely been more dense recently, mostly because I want to make a point of if somebody comes out from the public and wants to say something, I don't necessarily want them to get glossed over or lumped into these people said, especially when they're coming up and saying their names and addresses and.
Yeah, I'm not at all unhappy with that. I just didn't know if there's some governing reason, like if there's a best practice that we're ignoring and not realizing. If only we had an expert who could tell us if there's a best practice that we're ignoring and not realizing.
I thought the Attorney General had some guidance on it, and taking, I'd have to look into it.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine, that's fine.
There are some minimum, there's more like minimum standards rather than maximum standards.
Great, then, I don't care, because.
They do not need to be verbatim. That I can say 100%.
Yeah. And this is far closer to verbatim than we've ever had, but this isn't verbatim, and...
I had another question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the minutes from 826?
Yeah.
This is just procedural. We said that we were going to move the decision for 255 Sunny Hill to today's meeting. I don't know if that got pushed out, because that was the one we were, it was like too, yes.
Yeah. The last I heard about that was August 29. It was, so Richard had the language, it went to Carter's office, it then, so it went to Carter's office for authorization and to Town Council for review.
Okay.
And I have not heard about it since.
Okay, that's fine. I was just curious.
And this is the split vote we're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right.
If I made the August 26, and I didn't notice, I didn't, wasn't looking for it before, the majority of the public comments has addresses, but not all of them.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I would, I would expect that since that's a requirement at the podium, that that should be a requirement of the minutes, and that's just.
I'm inclined to agree. I believe the way I've been doing it is if they did state their address, the first instance of the person speaking, I include it, and usually if there was any that didn't have it, it's because they didn't state it at there, and I wasn't able to find it in a reasonable time span afterwards.
Do you not have a sign-in sheet for public?
No. We used to.
Okay.
We stopped doing that when Adam came on, or I, I think we stopped doing that when, when Marjorie left.
Yeah.
No, we stopped, we stopped doing it before. We stopped doing it before I was on the board.
Did we?
Yeah, because I, I was 2020.
Then it was when Adam came.
And so it stopped before May of 2020.
Right. I just find it's very useful to have that precisely for the minute taking.
No doubt.
Because if you hear the first name, Eric Smith.
There have been times, yeah.
I can go look, oh, Eric Smith, gotcha.
There have been times where I had to use like People Finder, one of those other weird sites from Google to find someone's proper spelled last name.
It's up to this board and the new director, but I mean, I always found it useful.
Yeah.
For what it's worth.
And that doesn't create an issue because we have Zoom as well, does it?
For a lot, like, for writing.
Like, because we'll have people attending the meeting who have to, have to, like, are expected to sign in, and we have people attending the meeting who cannot sign in. I don't really see an issue with that, but I'm always.
Yeah, their name doesn't have to be what shows up on the screen, the right name, like, yeah, that's a good point. I'm not sure how that's resolved.
I imagine the other, the other option could be like, being more of a stickler about like, please say your name, you know.
I try to remind people whenever they don't, but I'm sure I miss things. But, okay, that's a good point. Matt, are you saying that the minutes should get edited, or just as a thought for the future?
Well, we all know that Joan and Bob P's both live at the same address, and Bob's was listed, so again, it, it, it's really not a big concern of mine. I just want to make sure that we're above boards and we're not going to get.
That makes sense. Great feedback. As people are wrapping, if you're wrapping, if you're looking for a motion, the motion could be to, if you're looking to approve, to approve the minutes for July, for the public hearing for 240 Summer Street on July 22, 2024, as well as the August 12, 2024 meeting and the August 26, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, do we want more time to review or discuss? I'm mostly looking at Glenn, who is looking very thoroughly.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay, cool. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Okay, meeting schedule. We always meet at the lovely, large, white painted room, probably off-white in reality, here at Town Hall. We are upstairs, meetings are at 6:00 PM, and hey, there is no meeting. So our next meetings are 9:23, September 23, and October 28. There is no meeting on October 14 due to the federal holiday. We have some, we have some my lawyers to sign, that can be after the meeting. Great. Public comment, anyone on Zoom? Nope. Oh, this, we're out of here in just over an hour and a half, that's amazing, but we'll see. Ladies and gentlemen, this could make or break us. Board comment. No actual pressure, like, whatever, talk if we need to talk. Seeing none. Then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We haven't had a short meet, well, I've been here for a short meeting. Friends, thank you for joining us, have a great week, have a great week. If you're a business owner, check out the EDC's Meet and Greet for town officials and business owners and prospective business owners coming up. Thank you, have a great week.